So I call to order the town of Morrisville and also the town of Smoresville, planning and zoning board meeting for August, and ask Catherine to give us an indication.
Heavenly spirits, thank you for allowing us to have the privilege to meet here this evening openly and safely. Please provide comfort to the families of victims in Gilroy, El Paso, Dayton, Ohio, Toronto, and now Gilroy, or now LA. Something there, so provide that. Please guide us to make the best decisions for the town of Morrisville, for its citizens today, and its citizens in the future. Thank you. Amen.
Item three on our agenda is to adopt the agenda, and with the board's approval, I'd like to add a session, kind of a work session towards the end, maybe between after 12. Item 12, which will be Tim, who's got some preliminary ideas about some strategic questions. Presentation to go through on that. Any changes from your side, Courtney?
No, sir.
If the board is willing, we'll adopt that modified agenda and move on. All had a chance to review and comment on the minutes from our last meeting. Changes or corrections? Second?
Second.
Motion. Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sorry, I should have made that clear. So let me congratulate Sanjay, regular full-time member of the board. Welcome Chris, who is going to be alternate for us, and Kenneth Sack, who can't be with us, is a fool. So with his being absent, Catherine, if you would be a voting member this evening. Thank you. Thanks for bringing that up. So I don't think we have any formal presentations, but we have an option, item number six, for public comment. If anybody would like to make any comment that's public in general, then please come up to the podium and feel free to speak to us. Hi. So just going to observe this evening. Thanks for being here. Sometimes we have overflowing audiences and people standing at the back, but this evening, not so. So we're going to race ahead now, check off items six, seven, eight, nine, 10, and go straight to staff comments.
So I have a couple of things. One, congratulations to all the appointments that were made earlier this, actually it was probably latter part of last month. So, but there are a couple more that will be reappointed, so we'll make sure you pay close attention to the expired terms. You'll see some, what appeared to be oddities for somebody who was appointed for 30 days, but that's just adhering to the regulations, and there's going to be another vote in front of council for the next round. But the UDO does require that any vacant terms, that they vote to fill the vacant term only. They've done that now, and they can go back and fill the new term, once some of these are slated to expire. There's some expirations August of this year, and there's also an expiration of December of this year, so just please pay attention to that. And just as a reminder, if you do desire for reappointment, you do need to make sure you reapply for that appointment. So that's one item. The other item is the development activities for the month of July. We had a Starbucks submitted on Carrington Mill Boulevard, Sam's Express submitted on Chapel Hill Road. It's on the west side, just north of Green Drive, north of Moore Station. It's the vacant parcel just north of that. And the UNC data center, it's going in part of the Lenovo campus, and that was also submitted. It's really kind of a reuse and small expansion to an existing building. We also approved, in the month of July, the factory, which is the former Morrisville Outlet Mall, and that's a conversion from a retail to an office use. Town council did approve two items in July. They approved the special use permit, major modification, which is really just to remove the old Sam's Club out of the special use permit, which will allow for the redevelopment of the site as an office building. They also approved the preliminary subdivision plat and minor site, excuse me, major site plan for North Hampton Towns. That is the townhome development that was located between the railroad tracks in the first phase, or different phase of that development, in Church Street. We've had a couple of moving and shaken, if you will, within the planning department. So Brad was promoted to a senior planner. He has actually been here since 2010. He started as a planner one, and as he's increased his responsibilities, he did receive a couple promotions over the this year, and this one really was for recognition of all his hard work on the land use plan so far to date. He is managing that project, and it is really, the project's flowing seamlessly through the process at this time. The others, Elliot Ward, not somebody that really ever visits this board, but you'll be seeing him probably in the future. He was permitted from planner one to planner two. Primarily, he handles all of our plats. Those are the legal documents that create the actual lots. He handles a lot of our larger special event permits as well, so he'll be moving on to plan review and be equivalent to both Chris and Natalie. So that's a little bit going on in our department. Does anybody have any question on any of those approvals prior to moving on to next item on the agenda?
I have one question concerning the factory, just for interest. Is that by any chance the same developer who presented Sam's Club conversion, or is it somebody different?
They are somebody different. Looking, we've reviewed their elevation, since they're both really non-conforming sites in some ways when you come to the reuse. They both are taking completely different approaches, both innovative in their own right, I suppose, to how they'll reuse the buildings. Like with Sam's Club, you have a lot of height, so then you start, do you start building in, you know, kind of flex spaces on second stories that aren't true second stories, but maybe it would be open air. So it'll be interesting to see how they end up, you know, both of those are searching for one, maybe two tenants, but you're really taking instead of a five-story building, and they're getting spread out, you know, over a larger piece of real estate.
Anybody else have any questions for Courtney?
Just one on Sam's Express, nothing to do with Sam's Club, like?
No, these are car wash facilities, and this will not only be a car wash facility, but it is also like a training center for them. They're all throughout the area now, excuse me. But this one is a little bit different because it's in our, one of the town center areas, so you can't have drive-throughs adjacent, so the entire process is all located in a building. So you won't see the cars entering or even exiting. Part of the exit goes through a building, but then connects over to their training facility. Real interesting design, so they could get their product in there and then comply with our regulations as well.
One, one other question. On Church Street, towards the McCrimmon intersection, there is a, you know, plot being cleared. I guess it's somebody's individual home that they're trying to build there.
That is my understanding, that it's a person who purchased the lot and cleared it and will be building their house.
I was looking at the plans for that while we were talking on the Handy Development App. So it looks like this is a regular car wash building to me.
Well, does it show the actual elevations?
No, because unfortunately, we don't put that stuff on Nice to Have, but...
They should be on there. Let me...
All right, maybe this one does. I'm sorry. You're right, it does. I mean, yeah, I mean, at least from the site plan, it looks like your standard, like, car wash.
It does, and so it's a little deceiving, and you have to kind of delve in on it. So if you look aerial-wise, it does look like your standard car wash, just for orientation purposes. Here's Chapel Hill Road. Neiman's is down here, just perspective. So they'll enter to the site, and they enter it the normal way, but what this is, is a very large brick wall, with actually a roof structure on it, so I shouldn't even call it a wall. But if you look, the east elevation is what you will actually see, so the cars enter on the back of this building.
It's kind of like a facade.
And they, and they will drive through this portion, and they'll come back out that way, to give you an idea.
But basically, that shaded area on the, on the site plan is kind of the area that...
Yeah, so this area here translates to kind of this area here. So anywhere where you see it's kind of dark, that's all a roofed structure.
What is the little square? Is that, I guess you're saying, the training center?
That's their training center.
That's pretty different.
Any other questions for Courtney? From them to board comments. Catherine?
Oh, Courtney, I'd like to go first. So, oh, dark 30, when I started my journey, I was so happy to be able to drive on McCrimmon through, and McCrimmon, over the, I guess it's the creek behind the sheets, and I took it to the county town to therefore, I guess, I was fishing when I get out of town, but I could ride the new road, and so it was real nice. And it's, it's wonderful to see that road open finally.
I appreciate that. So thank you.
Pass that on to the, yeah, please pass that on to the town staff.
You could have gone just as fast as the first contractor. Oh.
Celebrate today.
I got the mail or flyer yesterday, and I'm like, ooh, I wonder if it... Right.
Tim. Well, I'm sure the rest of the board will join me in congratulating Brad and Elliot. Okay, so now, this is remarkably quickly, so, you know, somehow it goes against the grain to have a really quick meeting, so.
Yeah, if we just all want to move down to the, our little work session table here?
That might be easier, so let's, so keep kind of the meeting open, and I won't formally close it, we'll just move down to the...
That is correct. Before we get cited, just for audio purposes, the microphones down here do not automatically pick up your voice like they do on a dius, so you do have to hit the button and hold the button down while you speak. If it's going to be, if you start to talk a long time, sometimes nudge your friend and have them hold the button for you, and it becomes a teamwork situation. But I am going to kind of pass this over. If you remember last month, for those that were here, Tim sent me an email with some basic ideas and thoughts about certain processes. Some of them are related to the regulations, some of them are related to plans that are going through the process. And really, Peter invited him to kind of bring back and have the conversation at this meeting, and so that's why we're here. There is a little, kind of a draft presentation, which I think is probably some of your ideas. So Tim put this together, I'm going to go ahead and pass it around to everybody, and I'm going to turn it over to Tim.
Oh, it's bad, fine. It's too many bites, it's very scary. So when we're thinking about some of this, it's actually kind of, the perspective, just a little backstory. So coming in as a resident, I would look at things as a lot of residents would, and would kind of be interested and wonder about, okay, how can we get this road widened? Or how could they, quote unquote, "they" put in a traffic light, or just something along those lines? And then coming into a board session like this, and being a part of this, I realize like how there's so much complexity that goes into it, which you probably before didn't, at least I didn't have an appreciation from. And so recognize that all of the successes that have happened, and there's been quite a lot, have been due in part, I think, to just a subject matter expertise that staff has brought to the table and continues to do that, but also the openness from council and the boards like this that are willing to entertain these things from non-subject matter experts. So it's, I certainly appreciate that. What I wanted to do is to talk through a few potential ideas that focus on things like organization design and process improvement, and from a human capital kind of thing. So in the first, the second page there, where you have the different topics for discussion, we may not get through all of them, but there are some more tactical things around how we weight the considerations that we have within the UDO, and then there are some, how we use data, whether that is traffic data or other data that we use very good projections, but there's some questions around how we could potentially even get more to get better. So this is an idea of going from, you know, good to great. And then the broader conversation would be around our strategic planning in general, where we look at, how do we make our plan more digestible for the community? I think we do a tremendous job of outreach. I was incredibly impressed with how, first of all, how in-depth the plans are, but then how much we do to convey those plans to the, to the public. But that's competing with everything else that they have to digest in the course of a day. So how can we make that a bit more digestible, and then focus on conveying that strategy down to things that are memorable, and increase the transparency around things like mass transit, around things like affordable housing, and how we can move that forward? So that in broad strokes. So the first topic, and maybe it was good to just walk through each of these paws and then kind of break them down for discussion, and probably guys both don't have to hold them. But the first one...
I'm not sure how young you think.
I know. I was like... That's pretty impressive, right? The first item was around the weighting of factors when we, when we look at contemplating amendments to a zoning map or a rezoning. We get these 10 factors to consider, and for me at least, that's a lot to keep in mind when thinking about the fairness of, are we doing these things consistently and appropriately? So the potential issue that I see in the way that we're operating it now is that while it's not a pure objective play to how we do things, and there's some subjectivity to it, how do we avoid things like unconscious buy it or relying too heavily on subjectivity of the data to adversely, in fact, impact the outcome of things? So rather than have, okay, consider all of these things and make a recommendation, can we not break those down into variable gates? So for example, there might be a gate that has yes or no screens on some of the questions, where they're basically not no-brainers, but they're easy to decide between yes, this meets the criteria, or no. And then there might be another gate where we look at consistency of plans and ordinances. So do they meet that criteria? Yes. And as I looked at those, there could be five of the 10 that neatly fit into that category, where we can basically check the box quickly, or it could be done by staff beforehand, where that is done. And then there would be this other category where there is actually more discussion around some of the items that we have, so we would be able to look at those each in turn, and then actually apply some weighting to it. So again, when we think about our overall strategy, what we want the community to be, the developments that get approved could be aligned to that strategy. And so that, that benefit would really remove some of the subjectivity in this process, and then increase the consistency by which we do it. So on the next page, I've kind of put together a draft. Now, as a preface to this, this is just process, so while there's some suggestions here, not tied to content or offering an opinion on content, it's really just process, so these are all examples. So when I think about the, the 10 factors that we have, there could be a first gate that looks at inclusion, exclusion criteria. So as an example, one of them is, is it compatible with existing and proposed uses surrounding the subject land? And is the appropriate zoning district for the land? That's the, one of them. The other one is, is this required by changing conditions? Now, I'm not sure, I don't have the subject matter expertise to say, is that an and or? But they seem like things that would be pretty definitive, that we could make a decision on fairly quickly, and they're more objective criteria that you could do. The second component of those are then ordinances. So is this consistent with the comprehensive plan? Is this consistent with any provisions of the ordinance? Would this be consistent with the public interest and the purpose of the ordinance? Well, two of those, at least, seem again to be yes or no. They seem to either fit in that category or not. We may save time to weed those out and reject things that don't apply, or ask for clarifications around that, and then move into what would be more strategic elements or elements that have discussion around that. And that is where we would get to the third gate. And the third gate has five different questions or factors that we would consider. The first of which is, addresses a demonstrated community need. That's one. Would result in a logical and orderly development pattern? Would not adversely affect property values in the area? There's the fourth around would a development that is adequately served by public facilities, such as streets and sewage and so forth? And then the final one is around would avoid significantly adverse impacts to the natural environment, so forth? Well, all of those are relative. They're not clear yes or no. There might be some part of that. What, in the current process, what I don't get a good feel for is how important are each of those in respect to each other? So if, if, if a plan were to, or potential rezoning was going to occur, and they passed all the five yes or no questions, and we got to these, where do we want to lead the town? So you could see by the suggested weighting here, if this was actually how we evaluated things, we would say that, you know what, if it addresses a community need, that is more important than, you know, perhaps property values. And property values is more important than maintaining the environment. You could switch those, but, but it would give us some frame of reference around how do we consistently apply our recommendations in the area? What I did notice is, and this might be a clarification around the 10, is that we have one of these that seems duplicative. So addresses a demonstrated community need. We also have one that says would be consistent with the public interest and the purpose of the ordinance. So is there overlap there? Maybe, maybe not. You know, are both criteria absolutely necessary? So in my mind, fewer is better, and if we can get to a place where we rate and rank them, either very simply by yes or no, or even on a sliding scale, if you wanted to get it even more pronounced, you could say, does it demonstrate a community need, have a scale between one and five? And then you make the decision. And then what we could do is say that, in order for something to be approved, it has to meet 80% of the criteria. Okay? And then, so what this would, would guard against, I think, is, first of all, this is the consistency of which we apply, so we make sure that everybody gets a fair shake in the application, but then we can ensure, from project to project, month to month, year to year, we stay on point with the vision and the strategy by which we're applying these things. So, so that was a concept, again, not at all tied to content or how it approaches. The question that I wanted to pose to the group is, would something like this, a more robust way of reviewing this, be of value? And if so, you know, perhaps then we would put some time into thinking around how we would go about doing that. So pause there, but that was the first idea for consideration.
Thank you, Tim. So why don't we spend some time on doing that before we move on, as you suggest? So we'll take a break. So.
So I, it sounds a little bit like, to me, you're trying to make an algorithm. And I'm not sure that this whole process is made to be an algorithm. It's supposed to be subjective. It's supposed to be, I mean, the whole UDO already splits it into the subjective section, which, and the objective, where all the objective stuff is checked off, and those are the planned staff that approve a certain level of project. I mean, the, the point of this is to have a discussion and to have different ideas and different people coming to the table to try to work out the best decision. I mean, you could basically just, you know, write an algorithm, just click it off, and don't have a town council, don't have a planning and zoning board. I just, I don't know, it's a little... I mean, I'm really kind of unprepared for this, because I haven't read it over until now, but I mean, it's just... I mean, I can see what you're saying on one hand, but on the other, it's, I don't know, it just seems like you're trying to put a square peg in a round hole.
If I could provide a little background as to how these points, if you will, came about, I'm probably going to say six-plus years or so ago, council said, you know, it'd be really nice if we had a list that we could ask ourselves questions. And it wasn't necessarily external questions, but kind of internal questions when they're processing an application. And staff prepared that list. In the UDO, when we went through from the zoning ordinance, subdivision ordinance, if we combined in the UDO, we actually took the list and initially put it in the UDO. What we found were that basically no rezonings were most likely going to pass as a result. If you went through and did, not necessarily the exercise you're suggesting, but a similar exercise, if you went through as a whole and said, is it this, yes or no? Is it this, yes or no? Is this, yes or no? And that came through because there was a parcel that had been agriculture district for years. And when the UDO changed, everything that was agriculture district became burial density residential. So that same change happened. Staff, as part of the townwide rezoning, have recommended making the parcel a regional activity center, because that's what it is on the land use map. And the intent of the UDO and the zoning ordinance, or zoning map, is to be consistent as possible with the adopted comprehensive plan. This particular parcel vacant, parcel next to it vacant, adjacent to 540, kind of parcel south of it vacant. Everything else around it was this regional activity center. What the person, I can't remember what the use was that they potentially wanted, but they weren't convinced regional activity center is necessarily what they wanted. And there was a fair argument that they were making. It was some other kind of commercial use. And I think they were able to really get around spot zoning, because there may have been another little anomaly near it, so it wasn't spot zoning. And that's what they really wanted. As we went through and started going through this exercise, we're like, yeah, it's not going to happen, because there's no way that we can say that you've kind of can go through and answer a lot of these, because what you're asking is specifically not consistent with adopted plans. And then you're going to go into what general statute requires. So we had created these guidance. We thought it was a good idea to put them in the code, to create the better consistency as you're, you know, discussing here, and realized kind of, maybe we were a little premature in throwing them in there, because we really hadn't fully vetted it once we started testing it. And then you get to plan consistency statements, which is that resolution you read with all ordinances, and what statute requires. So keep it in mind that, you know, in our world of zoning in North Carolina, we have some general powers in zoning, and then we have very specific powers that are granted to us that we can't deviate from. Specific powers, some of them are kind of your legislative decisions, your causative judicial decisions, and your administrative decisions. So when we got to some of the planning consistency statement, you know, is it consistent with the adopted plans? The answer is no, it's not, but it's not necessarily an illogical request. So after further discussion and legal review, the decision was made to take them out of the code and put them in one of our manuals. So we have a companion administrative manual to the UDO. And really what that, it provides a couple of things, but if you have guidance that is subjective, and you don't have to necessarily meet all criteria, that's where you put it. It's subject to change. You can apply it. You don't have to apply it. All of our engineering standards are in a manual. So for example, if there's a deviation, a PE can repair, report, sign, seal it. We can evaluate it, and the town engineer can decide whether or not to grant this waiver. So for some more technical stuff, or stuff that's more squishy in this particular case, the manual is the way to go. Staff can modify it at any point in time. So if we found these standards aren't the best standards there, you can easily make modifications to the manual. It doesn't require action by council. It doesn't require action by council, and actually doesn't require action by the board, but if they're reasonable, we are more than happy to put them in a staff. And because that's the purpose of it, provide clarity to the process. So that's just back history of the process. And as we go through, as long as anything discussed is consistent with the state law that we have in place, we can talk about it. But then when it comes to specific policy changes or directions, those may have to be approved by council as well. But that background is how we ended up with these questions, if you will.
So I like some of the idea, and I understand where you're coming from. And the idea is, and I think that some of the, according to, a lot, some of these gating criterias are there, and in the briefs, they got a bunch of checks off, and it could be, we have a lot of this information, and maybe we want to work with how it's presented to us, so that it's a little, you know, clear. We have great staff right now, so we have great trust in our staff. And so long as our staff continues along this way, I think we are very com, let me phrase it, I am very comfortable leaving some of these things to staff approval, even though I would love to see and have the ability to comment on it. I get it. Your weighting ideas, when I originally thought about it, I was thinking about if you want to, it's not special use permit, but like, say you want to raise above the height, you know, the maximum height building, well, you can do these things. And, or if you wanted to change, do you know what I'm talking about, Courtney? If you wanted to?
Density bonuses? I mean, is that what you're referring to?
Density bonuses, maybe a little bit of going from the, what, sixty-five to sixty-nine percent pervious surface. And those sort of ratings and rankings, I would love to see some better clarification on. And I have my ideas, and everybody has their own ideas as to what might be good, you know, better, not so good. And I am, maybe not totally, I'm not dismissing your idea, but I'm also saying, some focus, you know, when we started talking about weighting, I'm like, oh yeah, we can talk about my solar stuff again. If you're going to green building, I'll raise the height limit. But, you know, this is a different type of weighting that you had in mind, and again, I haven't seen it either. So I'm rambling now.
Good input. Thank you. Sanjay.
I think, you know, I need some time to digest this so that we can come up with better ideas. But a couple of things that I think we, I also always struggle with is, especially when the ones that he had it in the objective criteria, where do we draw the line on what is considered adverse effect on property, right? What is the meaning of that, right? Is it five percent difference? Is it, and by the time when we get to review the projects, those, that data point is missing a lot of times, right? It doesn't tell you whether putting in this project in that particular place is going to impact them by plus or minus five percent. Or is it going to impact plus or minus twenty percent, right? Having that kind of information will really be helpful for us to figure out, you know, how much weight should we give to that particular criteria, right? For example, as you pointed out, if it is in public interest, and that public interest in our minds, for example, is really of key, is, would make a key difference in overall community, as opposed to a particular parcel, right? Then we should be able to factor in the impact, the adverse price impact, if you want, right? And so, you know, I think for all those things, the, I mean, another way of resolving this is perhaps, as we get to, very similar to the traffic patterns, right, where we get to see, here is the impact from a traffic point of view, right? We should also try and get the impact assessment in some, either in terms of percentages or hard numbers, to all these criterias, because that's the only way you can really make some database decision. Otherwise, they are all arbitrary, because your definition of adverse may not be the same as mine, right? And so that might help us figure out how much weight each one of us want to give to each one of these criterias.
So, thank you, Catherine. So number one, thank you very much for thinking this through. I mean, it's good to think about these fundamentals from time to time, so. What strikes me is that some of these criteria, the gate, the weighting, is something that we should do at an individual level. Think about that, and bring that sort of conclusion to the discussion. And I'm going to jump to your gate three, the subjective items, the weighting. The weighting would actually change according to the individual case that we're looking at, and it would be different from, you know, my opinion would be different from somebody else's. And that's actually the value that we have at discussion. So I might say that it doesn't particularly address a demonstrated community need, but it would be very good if I thought about that, and having this list helps me to do that, you know. Another board member may say it's really, really important for the community, and that's the level of discussion that would actually be helpful in coming together to come up with a recommendation. I'm a little bit worried, I think perhaps, like Lee was, that, you know, I don't want us to be replaced by a computer. And this is the opportunity for us to be subjective, and to weigh that, you know, the objective factors versus the subjectivity, and that's what we as members of the community bring to it. So I wouldn't want, you know, that as part of this process. Maybe what we need is the equivalent of staff's administrative manual, which kind of gives some examples, and goes through and says, you know, as you're considering this, you might want to consider these factors, and how important is each of these factors in this particular case? So that, I think, would add a certain objectivity to our otherwise subjective discussions. So, thanks, Catherine.
I don't think I have any thoughts that haven't been answered. I would say, we're probably already dealing with exceptions by the time they come to this board. So when you wait, you're just telling to what degree they deviate from the norm, and I'm not sure that has a value. So I would tend to agree, asking the appropriate questions to make decisions, and walk through in your mind what that is, is probably most helpful. I don't have experience on this board, but that's just my thought about, by the time it gets to this board, it's been through a lot of questions and answers, I would assume.
So I was thinking, I mean, sometimes, I mean, I think I'm frustrated, and I think some of you are frustrated, because it seems like, when it comes to us, we basically, literally have no choice but to approve it. And there's not, you know, just because the, you know, we allow property rights, and, you know, that we have to be consistent. And so I definitely wouldn't be in favor of anything that sort of locks things in any more than they already are locked in, you know, because as Peter said, I mean, a lot of this stuff should change, based on where it is in town, because like, if you're in the town center, that's going to change, you know, some of these things. Like, maybe the environment won't be as important, but if you were near wetland, environmental would be much more important. Or same thing, you know, maybe I want to tear every tree down, but, you know, you may be totally in favor of trees. I mean, everything needs to be brought, like Peter said, to the table with everyone's own sort of thought. And you can maybe enlighten someone else, and, you know, explain why you think something is good or bad, or whatever, and maybe other people will consider that or not. I mean, but, you know, again, I'm just definitely not in favor of anything that would lock things in any more than they sort of are, like to say it's always going to be this percentage, or any percentage.
I think I'm agreeing to what Peter was saying earlier, right? I think each of us should figure out what is the right weightage for the right property, et cetera. But I think perhaps this is also something we need to think about, is what is our evaluation criteria for each proposal? Something similar to lines of what you were talking about, what the staff does with their evaluation, right? Maybe if we say, here are the ten things that we are going to, we as individuals are going to definitely assess, and then here are, you know, then you have, you can have five more of your own, but at least think about these broad, I mean, it's similar to what we do with project, projects that come to our evaluation, right? There is a guideline, if you will. I wouldn't call them hard weights, but these are more kind of guidelines to align us with where, the reason why we do these strategic plans is to make sure we are kind of walking in the same direction, right? And therefore, having a guideline is always good, right, as opposed to not having a guideline. So instead of, I wouldn't call them hard weights, but think about them as more guidelines, and we individually can figure out where they are, just two things.
So, Juan, I want to seek clarification. You, your point of the discussion was more related to the legislative items, correct? Not the administrative items? Because legis, I've heard us start talking about, you know, it comes to us and we just have to approve it. Those are the administrative, and I think your context here was legislative. I just want to make sure I'm clear.
So, and that's actually what prompted it, actually. Because in my time, we've approved everything. So I completely agree with the sentiment that we shouldn't lock things in to the point where it becomes formulaic, and it creates more administrative burden, and we're defaulting our thoughts to an algorithm. I definitely don't like that. But I think it's almost the same thing when you come in with selections of projects, a project portfolio, not everything gets approved. And the one thing that we said, ah, we're not in favor of that, it got overturned. And so when I look at that, even in a short time, I question that as a process, that maybe the pendulum has swung too far the other way. And we're actually doing the opposite of what's feared, is that instead of being too restrictive on what we're doing, we're being just overt and saying everything can go. And obviously not with a mindset, but what I would like to see is either, if some things are, you know, done and decided, then I would trust staff to say, we've already vetted this, you don't need to consider it, it's been done. I think there's a level of expertise that would make sense. But then for subjective items, it would be good to have a general guidance for the town, this is what is the direction that we're going. You have to make your own guidance and your decision around that, but as we think about the strategy and the vision of the town, we would like to have more buildings with, you know, solar energy, and that's a green component of things. And we would, so you give some context to it, and then with that context, we actually have discussions around the fewer, more meaty items, and then come to your own conclusions around that. So I think it's more of a guidance than trying to be very prescriptive. But that's, if I were to see, you know, occasionally something get, you know, not passed, that would be a good sign that we've had a good medium.
Well, of course, since the implementation of the UDO, we only see the things that are not, you know, a certain size, and so we tend to see the bigger projects, and the more legislative ones. It is interesting that, yeah, in your time, I think there's only one recommendation for denial, and that was subsequently changed, and then got approved by the council without coming back to us. But part of our role, part of our value, I've seen over the years, is that we can subtly change developers and what they do, even if we don't have full authority to do that. And we've seen that with the implementation of top lot parks, and, you know, a few things here and there, and reducing the height of certain townhomes to three stories, not four, those sorts of things. So, so we do have that influence, so take heart.
Well, and kind of give you, every jurisdiction is a little bit different. I mean, so there, I was reading over some of the statute as you know we're talking, and it literally says the planning board shall, in many places, when I was kind of reading. It's dictating, you know, for example, you know, we shall bring you legislative items related to ordinance. But it's very clear that you're not a board we can skip, you know, that there's an importance to. And it talks about that you shall talk about whether or not, and you shall act on whether or not it's consistent or inconsistent. It was that general, that consistency statement. But I guess the part that's kind of missed, so some jurisdictions, if you drop something off, it's processed. All, I mean, if you're willing to pay your X dollars for a rezoning or a land use map amendment, it's processed. So then staff makes their recommendation, which is where we are recommend, recommendation just like you are when it comes to rezonings, our roles are very similar. So, you know, when we're going to make a recommendation, you're going to recommendation, and then council's going to make the final action. So that's one. So you can get great stuff and not so great stuff. So in those cases, everybody will just allow anything to come through the door, you'll see a lot more denials occur. So because of the cost of developing in Morrisville, most developers are not willing to take that risk. So we do require pre-application meetings, if they're even thinking or going to submit a rezoning case. And in those, we'll say, you know, we do not, staff will not support this. You know, you're trying to build a warehouse next to a house, I mean, something along those lines. We're more than happy to process your application, but I'm like, you know, that you will be receiving a recommendation to not from staff. So there's a, there's a fair amount of clearinghouse that occurs. So the number of people that come and talk to us, if you put those as no, there are more no's than there are yeses to this process. You know, we've had some recently where a lot of people wanting to convert some of our commercial land to industrial, along with 54. And staff has stated to multiple people that's not something we would support. Here are some great areas where you can go and build, and it's approved administratively, and it's a fairly clean process. So I think that's one reason you see such a low rate of denials here, is there is, you know, people are making decisions as to whether or not they want to spend the time, money, and energy into a project, if it's potentially a nod starter, if our staff is going to recommend denial. I will say that I have seen the board recommend approval over the years, and when it gets to the council, council's not willing to support it. It's either denied, or they withdraw, one of the two. It's better to say that you, you know, action was taken than it is to say you were denied. But we've had one of those, actually, I believe since you've been on the board. There was the one that wanted to build a banquet facility on aviation. And, you know, they started changing all the conditions to respond to council's concerns, and staff no longer supported it, you know? You know, we were very clear that we thought that the economic viability was being highly diminished, and that we would no longer support it. You know, and that in particular instance, they withdrew. So there is this evolution where things can change. And in the case of the one where y'all recommended denial, and it went on, I think, could it have come back to this board? Yes. I mean, council could have opted that, but council has four discretionary choices. I should say three discretionary, one, you know, as the applicant has to agree, but they can just approve it as it was submitted, which may be the same or not the same as what was submitted to staff and this board. They can recommend denial, or actually just deny it. And they can ask conditions be added. In this case, that's what happened. There was multi-month process of conditions and amending by the applicant. Or they can remand it back, if there are significant changes. That's not defined. So is it because you've made it more restrictive than what you saw? Does that make it significant enough? It becomes less restrictive than what you saw? I don't know that I have the magic answer to that, and that's really up to the will of the council, you know, as to whether or not they remand back. And honestly, they can remand it all the way back to staff, it's not just the planning and zoning board. And then they would pick up all the noticing fees and review fees, et cetera, along the way. way.
I think one good outcome of this one is, I think we all recognize that for some of these, we need data points, right? Like adverse impact to property values. So one thing I would request the staff is, at least coming, maybe in the future, when we come back, we should have some of these data points assessed, or at least have some kind of recommendation on, if we do this, this will add 10% value, or 20% value, or negative or positive, either way.
And that's one of the goals of actually the land use plan update. So we, and that was one of the key things when we were trying to find a firm, is we needed to have general ideas. If this zoning of this, you know, it's not just how much tax revenue do you receive, but it's also what services the town having to provide. You know, so for example, mini storage, a great tax rate on a mini storage facility. You know, we, you know, very little impact. I mean, think you have an office, so there's very water sewer impacts are very low. You know, there aren't any children going to our schools, there aren't any people needing jobs, you probably have a few employees coming to work there, and typically, it's one or two, you know, at any given time. So from that standpoint, I would tell you mini storages are what we need. But then that doesn't make a community, you know, if you had all mini storage. So if you took just like the financial component, you know, you will find advantages and disadvantages of every single one. So even if you may find it's going from X zoning that could have, you know, a net value of X, and then you know, something else going to have a net Y, even though there may be a loss, and there may be, you know, loss in revenue based off the service of everybody, it still may be good for the community. So that's why you have to look and you, at all of them, and, you know, really take that value into it, you know? It's senior housing, that is a great asset for the community, but it's very expensive for public service, you know? But, you know, having a place where somebody wants to stay in town, you know, they've grown up here, lived here, and they can afford to go into senior housing, it's a great community asset, but it is a really good, I mean, how, are we losing money? I don't know, I don't have the numbers, but those are the things to think about, you know? Benefits, yes, you know, schools, benefits, but let's talk about how much tax dollars we get from a school, when they cite here. We don't get any, but there's another value to it. So you don't want to overthink or overweight anyone for some of those reasons, if you headed, you know, if you head down this waiting category. But that's really the purpose of kind of internalizing, asking those questions for yourself, you know? At all. Because you could check off a lot of these with yeses, and it still may not be the best way to go.
I think a couple of points here. When I started learning about town, and I got active with the town, and first became an alternate on the board, so the, I got, when I got active with the town, there was a couple of controversial projects. And one of the projects, which happened to be the Harris Teeter, we had a line out the door, people complaining that their property values are going to go down.
People that signed something saying they knew commercials going to be built there at Breckenridge?
Yeah, that there's a stubout right in front of my door, front door, and, you know, forgot, immediately forgot that stubouts are generally there to be built someday. But one of the council members at the time, that when I spoke with, we were concerned about the backside of town, where I live in Town Hall Commons, and we had concerns, and there was a couple, a three council members that I was talking to and getting some advice from, and very specifically said, put it in black and white. Don't talk about your own individual property value going up or down, because that's not on the list of top priorities for the town. It's public safety, it's, you know, community development, those sorts of things. Individual property values, not so much. All right, this is what, I had several members of town council tell me, maybe it's changed. But the moment, I think, Sanjay, that we start saying, oh, well, we expect this might add 10% value, you know, to the property, the people that live next door are going to, you know, when they don't get their 10%, they're going to say, um, excuse me. And so, that was one comment. The other comment was when I started, probably the biggest pill to swallow was, I didn't, was grasping the process, and grasping North Carolina State Legislature and how they work, and what we're allowed to do and not allowed to do. And then, I would say that I'm always, if you want a piece of land and it's zoned for what you want to do, you should be able to build on your property. But this whole idea of if it's a site plan, and if it meets the ordinances and the, you know, the UDO ordinances, yeah, we don't have much we can do, because it's zoned correctly, it's meets the UDO, and, you know, we can say, well, what about this, or what about that, and make some nudges. But it's really only in like zoning that we can put in some, unconditional zoning, that we can put in some of what we might want, instead of, does it follow, you know, these checkboxes of the rules? And it was, and I'm not saying, it's just something I've seen every, every one of us that's come through here over the years, it's like, oh, that's how it works. Okay.
Do you, just in interest of time, you want to move, you want to quickly do the next one, or you want to?
I think I set kind of a 45 minute limit, so I think we're about that. So why don't we leave it chopped up like that? So what would you like to do on this section for next month? Do you want us to bring back our further ideas?
I mean, I, I'm okay to go with what was, I mean, the position, I think, is that it's not, not going to be helpful, I think, which is fine. I think it's, if there was anything, it would be to eliminate questions that we do not have the ability to effect. So I would love to shorten these conversations and make them very focused on what we can and cannot add value to. So if there are specific elements of this that are decided, let's move them off the list and create a very short list of things that we want to discuss that are, that are actually meaningful. And I think the point is well taken, that it's personal, it sounds like it's more of a personal priority of how those things are rated and weighted, but if we shorten those, that would be fine. But again, again, that's, if there's no action, that's okay as well.
Okay. Is that list of what we can and can't do, or what, like, you know, I know we have very severe restrictions on condemning land, for example, is there, does a state, or has some other municipality put together like a list of, you know, for us dummy citizens, you know, that don't necessarily know that we have, you know, we can go on and on and on about schools, and trying to get a developer to give us land, but if the county doesn't want to put a school there, doesn't matter, you know, they're not going to take the land. So that's something that we can't, as much as we might like to. Or, you know, some of what we can do for, you know, you know, and, yeah.
Yeah, if something is on a list for consideration, it should be there for a reason. So I think if, if we are looking at something that does not adversely affect property values, there should be a definition that we can actually have a discussion around it. If natural environment is important, let's get some refinement around that and have a discussion around it. But I think few, usually fewer things are better, but that's my only suggestion, really.
If the list wants to be modified in the administrative manual, as I said, the list can always be modified, it's in the manual. It's truly designed to be guidance-driven, not regulation-driven. So, I mean, if we want to have another discussion on what we think more appropriate questions are to potentially ask and pare it down, more than happy to do that. I would also say that I would challenge each of you to, the questions that we have now, if you don't like them, you can cross through them. If you have another set that you think are important, you can do it, but come for prepared meeting, coming up with your set, coming prepared to the meeting, having asked those questions in many ways, saying, okay, I need additional information on X. You know, if you are generally concerned that it's going to have an adverse, negative impact on the property, it is okay to ask the applicant for additional information, because you're concerned that X use could have an impact. The applicant has a right to tell you no, and you also have a right to say, you know, I don't have that information, and so I'm not 100% sure this is in the best interest of the community, and so your vote can be a no. So I mean, those are, you know, it's, I'd say there's some empowerment in conducting this exercise, and, you know, before you get here, versus waiting for the applicant to give their position, or staff to give their position, is to really kind of study it before you get here. And if, as a whole, we want to come up with a better list, or an improved list, again, it's guidance, and it definitely can be modified. And I will also add that, you know, one of the benchmarks, as from our strategic plan, my department was challenged with creating a work plan, and some of the work plan has to have benchmarks. And one of our benchmarks is that, you know, our rezoning should be consistent with our adopted plan, and if they're not, it's considered a failure on our end. I expect us to fail for a while. Once we have the land use plan in place, I suspect there'll be success. You know, because really the change is that our guiding, you know, principles from our plan are from 2009, started in 2007, you know, we're 10 years later. So that is the change that has really happened. There's been a ton of growth, a lot of new people, a lot of great new ideas. So in many ways, concur, you know, you should only have kind of clear-cut rezoning cases in some instances, that means our plan's right. When you start to see a lot of rezonings, that means there's something to me that tells me we need to go back and take a look, because something's not quite right. So I think there's some really added value to what Tim has put into this conversation and his thoughts behind it.
I think you've opened up another discussion, which is how much the zoning should actually reflect the land use plan. And I'm not so, I'm not so, I don't believe that they should necessarily track one-on-one, otherwise, one of them is redundant. The whole point of the land use plan is a broad-brushed view of the overall community. And broad brush means that at individual, tiny level, there are going to be some, these earnings that don't necessarily conform to the land use plan, so.
Yes, and I would start to argue if your plan's right, though, what's right adjacent to it? You know, so it's not a hard boundary, if you can move the lines a little bit, but when you start having a shift that's hitting, you know, 10 miles down the road, maybe a little off then, but I agree, you can't go on a granular parcel-by-parcel basis. You know, but if you start seeing major segments start to change, you know, then it becomes a little more challenging in whether or not we've designed it right in the first place.
I just didn't want you to get deemed for something that's not necessarily possible.
I set the benchmark, so I don't know if it's much of a, as much as it tells a story. And a lot of times when, if we start to see, almost like recurring themes in planning, you know, if I have a waiver that's requested by every applicant, what does that tell me? Tells me the code's probably not right. So that's where some of mine are trying to think, track things that could be signaling something that's not quite right, and for us to look at it and say, you know, is it just this one-off, or is there really something that should be, you know, modified and fixed? Yeah, I mean, there can be lots of reasons, and it's, it's a way for us to benchmark, you know, if everything's staying in the green, if you will, we've, probably everything's okay, but if we start to see shifts in certain things, there's lots of little benchmarks like that that we set. And it's really to look for, if we're starting to see trends that differ, that our current code or adopted comp plans.
Okay. So let us try and get back on track again. So, Tim, I really appreciate you bringing this to this level of discussion, which is very good. I like your five items, the factors on your slide on page five. Would it be helpful if we came back next month in agreement with those five, or modify those five, or our own sets of factors? And that would sort of add to the discussion, and that would then become the basis of our equivalent to the staff's administrative manual, which is the things that we look at every time we have that sort of thing. Sanjay?
Yeah, I was going to suggest that, that, you know, we don't stop this discussion. I would request Courtney to, or Tim, somebody to send the full deck. This way, not only we talk about those five, but I would also like to hear Tim's thoughts on the remaining of the decks, remaining slides, because I think they are also equally important for us to talk about. I, for example, she just brought up about green features, right? The more and more I see the plants, I feel like we are, we are about 10 years behind where the technology is in rest of the world, right? I would like to see that in our building codes, in our, in how we approach, where we are taking the town to, you know, be at le, if not ahead of everybody, but be at least current with everybody. You know, things like, why can't we do traffic manage, you know, synchronization of traffic? I understand the challenges, right? But we have to at least talk about them and figure out, how do we get these things in the plan or in the code, one way or the other? To me, 10-year plans are ancient thought processes, because, you know, society is evolving at such a rapid rate, that no longer 10-year plans become useless after three years of existence, right? So to me, an ideal plan is about five years. I understand in a government world, things don't change as rapidly, right? So we have to find a mean, but at the same time, we also have to figure out is, how do we have more agility? How do we get new things embraced and incorporated in an ongoing method? So we should have these discussions and figure out, how do we include this in the more strategic ways of doing things?
So here's a suggested target for next month, then, that we come back with our own list of these factors, and that we quickly move on, and maybe we'll take one or two of your next topics, if you could lead us again, I think this has been very helpful. Reserve the right to change my mind if we have an extremely busy agenda next month.
Do we have a template briefing sheet that y'all start with, like the blank, the blank Word file, that's just the template that y'all fill out? Because that shows at least who checks off in some of the question checkbox boxes that we go through. Or should we all agree to look at one particularly comprehensive decision that was made, and say, yeah, you know, look at it kind of as, as an aftermath, and say, well, this would have been, you know, use that as a basis for what our questions are, and other ideas may come up. And, but I like the idea, if we all use the same, you know, we could use more than one, but some similarities in some of the plan, you know? Because I think I'll go into the existing plans, and I'll say, hmm, if I look at this, what's important, yeah, okay, I remember that, and look at these questions a little more specifically, or think about new questions, and that's.
I don't know if you want to go back and look at plans, because those are administrative. You would want to look at rezonings, because those are legislative. And this is the context of legislation. To answer your question, the way our software system, we don't use Word, or anything along those lines, it, it's a completely different system than that, that's hosted in the cloud. So, you know, I would just challenge each of you to come back with your own list, you know, whether you're a computer person, paper person, or whatever have you. And, I mean, if you're happy with the current list, just say, I'm happy with the current list, you know, if you.
This is more or less the current list that he's got here, correct?
He pulled some of them. I can send a link to everybody where the list is actually derived from in the administrative manual, so we're all looking at the same document. So I'll send that to you, hopefully tomorrow, and then we can, y'all can just, on your own, come back with these items. If there's, you know, either if the chair wants, or if there's a majority vote, we can put this on the agenda for next time is another work session. And as the chair suggested, if we happen to have a heavy agenda, y'all have the reserve the right to defer it to the next meeting. You wouldn't have to necessarily remove it, but if you find it's just too late, you can just table it to the next meeting. And that's an easy way to kind of get it on there, and if it needs to be tabled a couple of times, we can do that. couple of times, we can do that.
Or perhaps we can have a, you know, just a, what do you call, roundtable discussion, may not be on those, the, the planning and zoning board times, but something like what you are having for affordable housing, right? Something similar, we can have a, we can come off, off calendar day and have that discussion.
Early issues are statutory, we have to advertise our meeting and also staff's time, so. So if we can combine it, and it's not going to be horrendously long meeting, then I think that's what we should aim for. But I'll work with Courtney on the agenda for next month. Which gets me to a point on item 14, we are meeting on September the 12th, right?
Yes, I only put those on there because they were different dates than you normally have.
Good reminder.
So we do have the August 27th affordable housing item, and once that agenda is posted, Marty will send that out to the entire board. And then October 3rd is, remember, we adopted the schedule December or so of last year? It's not the second Thursday of the month, it is the first Thursday of the month, because most of us are a continuing education conference that same day. Just wanted to refresh everybody's mind, that's why I put them on there. But yes, we do have a meeting in between. He did, so y'all are, it's not a joint work session, but as you may remember, several months ago in one of my staff updates, I said that, you know, council provided direction on, you know, there's three sub-areas, there's two alternatives for each sub-area. They provided direction on that, and the one thing that they hadn't decided on is dense or less dense for town center. So we're bringing back modeling, that will be, it's not something you can present static, so there won't be any attachments, but it will be live at the meeting. You can watch it from home if you prefer to sit in your pajamas, or if you want to come here and join me, you're welcome to do so too. Either way is fine.
Is that going to be, like, where in the agenda? I've got another meeting that will probably be over at like eight. I mean, if I came after that, would that work, or is this going to be something that's before?
I can't remember, it's a work session, so it's going to be at the very end of the agenda. The work session this coming--
13.
13, for the next council. I just, I don't remember all the items on the agenda.
Agenda's probably published by now, right? So we can go look it up.
What time do you think it will be?
Not here.
Be here around eight, probably, I just, you know?
Yes.
Don't mic up, just go on by the house if it's over.
Sure, too, you can rewind and watch, so that's another option.
I, I think we have our action items for next month. Any other comments, anybody, or should we move to item 15?
Hey, Tim, I'm really glad that you've come on board and are thinking about these and taking the time to think about these and making the rest of us think about these. Peter and I have been around since, well, the Jurassic Age, and we sometimes forget, or at least, let me rephrase that, I sometimes forget that everybody that comes into this board, there's a learning curve, and you should, each new person, it's good, that thinking about these things and, and bringing them up to discuss as a group, because we should, and not just accept what we're doing as the truth and, you know, this is it.
Thank you, appreciate that.
I agree with those comments, except in my case, I'm pre-Jurassic, so--
Yeah, he's pre-Jurassic, I'm Jurassic.
If there are no other comments, let's move to item 15. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion, we adjourned.
Do I have a second?
Second?
Very good. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned, thank you.